Even though the time to do so long passed, a determination, they failed to do so. So whether or not they're waiving their rights makes no difference. They don't have any rights to waive in that regard. They failed to appeal the determination that they're in violation, and that's that. Then they go on to spend more than half of their five-page letter telling us and this board why they're not even subject to getting a special permit, even though the building commissioner told them they have to get a special permit. They told us they're a farm. They're not. They told us they're exempt because they're agricultural or horticultural use. They're not. The letter I submitted to this board makes it abundantly clear why they are not. They do not cultivate or harvest crops. They do not raise cattle. They do not do all of the things on the property you have to do to get those exemptions. They take logs from other sources off-site. They process them onsite. They sell, they stockpile huge piles of mulch, and then they sell it. That doesn't meet any of the exempted, statutorily exempted uses that would get them out from under the zoning ordinance. And to claim that exemption would totally render meaningless the mulch special permit requirement of the zoning ordinance. Why is it there if you can claim a horticultural-agricultural farming use? It's wrong. It's not appropriate for them to claim it, but they spend, spill a lot of ink telling you why they think they are. Again, after the building commissioner told them they need a special permit. They tell you, and they told us, we really don't think we need it, and we're going to reserve that assessment for some time later in the future. Two lots, the residences in the city of Peabody continue to be harmed. The J.D. Raymond July 1st correspondence provided you with a docket of a case that heard this very matter, but they failed to give you more evidence of bad faith, the actual decision that resulted from that case. And I'll tell you that the Superior Court reviewing this matter in Lawrence determined that the harm is the unaddressed potential fire hazards, health hazards, safety hazards, and nuisance described by two lots and the residences created through alleged zoning violations in the prolonged amount of time the alleged hazards and nuisance have remained unaddressed. That's the Lawrence Superior Court saying that. That's not us. They also put forth this Latchey's defense, which is, "We sat on our rights." This is Farm Avenue Two Lots and the residences at Farm Avenue. "Sat on their rights so long that they should be deprived any defense." Well, when you're in violation of the zoning ordinance, you don't get to claim that defense. When you are the subject of a zoning enforcement action, you don't get to claim that defense. The law is very well established on that. But if this board wants to adopt that argument, you're sending a message to anyone else who comes before this board that the longer you allow a violation to exist, the better the chance the violation will be excused from compliance. That's certainly not what I know this board, I know that this board does not want to send that message, and the law doesn't support sending that message. And the reason why this Latchey's argument is really irrelevant but ridiculous on its face is that the harm to the residential use didn't even accrue until the residential use was permitted. And it was not permitted until this board unanimously granted the comprehensive permit. And it wasn't permitted until subsequent permits were, pardon me, obtained. So asking for enforcement of the ordinance based on harm to a use that was not yet permitted would have been premature. Two lots and the residents continue to have its resource areas. We are in environmentally protected resource areas for which we have orders of conditions and a partial certificate of compliance. Their use continues to overwhelm our stormwater swales, which are inundated with mulch and dilated runoff. This is about harm. Two fires have already occurred at the J.D. Raymond site resulting in snarled traffic, $1.2 million in damages, and injury to one of our firefighters in this city. That's a fact. And if you've read the papers recently with all of the heat that we've had, there have been burning four-alarm mulch fires in Marblehead and other surrounding communities recently. This is a ticking time bomb, waiting to happen. And just to give you an idea of what happened back in 2010 at that very site, these are some pictures, burnt-out trucks, four-alarm fire. This is a picture of fire officials and DPS officials trying to get water and fire suppression apparatus to the actual fire source. Go ahead, Tony. It happened again two years later, resulting in the closure of Route I-95, Route 128. So you're going to hear a defense of that letter, and I'm sure of that July 1st letter. And what we're asking is for the board to reject entirely the arguments made by J.D. Raymond in that letter. They're pretty offensive. And view it for what it is, that it's further evidence that they have no intention of being in compliance with the ordinance as required by the building commissioner, and cannot be allowed to self-govern its own compliance. So we would respectfully request that the board determine a reasonable deadline for J.D. Raymond to comply with the ordinance, to keep J.D. Raymond accountable, and to keep the process for that accountability transparent. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions. And through the chair, do you have anything to add?
No, it's something that we've been dealing with. Sorry.
This is Tony Cappuccetti from Hayes Engineering.
Thank you. Tony Cappuccetti, Hayes Engineering, 603 Salem Street, Wakefield, Mass. For the record. This is something we've been dealing with for quite some time, conservation issues. They are in front of conservation. We do realize that they are advancing towards a special permit, but all we're asking for is a reasonable timeline. I think this board understands how long it takes to permit projects, so something that is within a reasonable permitting deadline, just so that there's something that everyone's working towards for resolution for this.
So you do acknowledge wholeheartedly that this is before conservation? Conservation doesn't meet in August. They'll meet in September. And then, from that point, it goes before the council?
It won't go before the council until there's an application, but you have a letter before you indicating that they don't even have to apply for a special permit, so it's a question as to whether they're even going to do that.
Attorney Panos.
Yes.
Through the chair, do you have a suggestion for a reasonable date for application on the special permit?
Since they're winding through and the conservation issues are being peer-reviewed, and I know that that is actively going on, and the peer-review list is quite lengthy, which, again, I mean, we reviewed their conservation commission application. It's quite deficient in many ways. Peer-review can't even look at certain things because they haven't offered certain detail in their plans. So to answer your question, I think, given what the chair just mentioned, conservation is off in August, I'd say a discernible, reasonable timeline is probably about 60 days.
Thank you.
And by the way, because this will allow a mechanism to, again, I don't want to use the euphemism, hold their feet to the fire, we're trying to avoid that, but keep them accountable, keep it honest. If they are in good faith, actually proceeding through the path of compliance, and they need more time to achieve that compliance, I'm going to be the last person that stands here and says, "The time is up. Cut it off. Cease and desist." No. But I would suggest that if they're still playing games.
However.
Yep.
If the board gave them a timeline of December 15th, and December 15th rolls around, who's going to come back to us and say, "Oh, they're not ready yet, but we'll allow them another six months"? Who's actually going to do that?
I think at that point, we would all have to determine what it is they've done up till December 15th. And if they really haven't done a lot, that, again, would indicate their bad faith. If they have done a lot, and they're moving toward compliance, then I guess I can't answer the question until the fact actually arises, until the situation arises, and it's totally determinative of the context in which it arises. But I'm just suggesting to you that I would not stand here.
I know, I know.
You know, and say, "The time has come," and shut it down. No. If they're working toward it, that's what we want.
So that'll be some of our questioning, and I hope they address that, because we are going to be interested in what they've done since the May 2nd letter of Commissioner Talarico, and the assurance that they'll be working with J.D. Raymond to get into compliance. So that's one of the things we'd like to hear about today.
From?
Through J.D. Raymond.
For now? All right. Thank you.
We're all set for now? No, go ahead.
Through the chair. Just, here's my issue, all right? I appreciate your opinion of their deficiencies and what they're not doing, and how they are the worst company in the world. And that's based on your opinion, the project's opinion. To me, Mr. Talarico set the wheels in motion. He is the enforcer of these ordinance. And if that's the way he chooses to enforce it, the timeline is really up to him. He's the person that has to inspect it. He's the one that's working with the company. He's the one that's going to send his inspectors up there to make sure that they are moving forward, all right? So for me to say, to sit here as a board and say, "Well, we're going to develop a timeline based on absolutely no information at all." What did it look like when you first went up there, Mr. Talarico? What does it look like now? Where have they gone? Have they, they've got a, well, they've met with the fire department, and you're concerned, and by the way, you had to go back 10 years to come up with these concerns that we had damage and closed down 95. So for 10 years, that leads me to think, not a lot has happened up to here. I'm sure things have happened, but not to the extent that you're bringing up. And they did have a meeting with the fire department. And according to the memo from the fire department, everything that the building inspector is laying out for them to do, they're in compliance with. So I, as the enforcer, since he's the enforcer, I would really depend more on his timeline than to try to sit here and establish one as a board with really no information, other than you sitting there saying, "Well, he said, she said, he did this, they did that." I mean, if we really want to settle this, let's bring Mr. Talarico in and say, "How are they doing"? Because he's the one to make that determination. He is the enforcer of the ordinance, not...
If I can answer that question, or answer some of those comments, the reason why they did not voluntarily talk with the fire department, they were, they're under active cease and desist with timelines set by the fire department, okay? That's what that memo that you're pointing to indicates. And they still have an outstanding issue that they've been dealing with, kind of playing around with for eight months. Information that we provided to this board as a part of our comprehensive permit, the very same information, in a couple of months. So as far as a timeline set by the commissioner, where's the timeline? What is it? He told us, and this is what we are determining, this is what we are seeking enforcement of, this is what we're seeking appeal of, he told us that, "Yeah, they're in violation. We agree with them. But I'm not going to do anything about it yet until I have to, until there's evidence of bad faith." Well, you got evidence of bad faith in the letter that was submitted to you on July 1st. That's not my opinion. They told you in that letter they don't think they need a special permit. And Commissioner Talarico said, "They do." I'm not arguing with you. I'm just, I'm not even parsing the facts. This isn't my opinion. This is what's on the record.
Okay. Now, if I could just answer that. You spend a lot of time before this board and the city council, and many a times, many a times, I've heard you say, "You don't think we need to do this or that." And that is your right, all right? We say, "Well, I don't think we need to apply for this." You might be right, you might be wrong, but that's not settled here.
I would argue with you.
That's not settled here.
I don't want to interrupt, but it is settled because the building commissioner determined it already. The building commissioner determined that they need a building, a special permit. He determined that. That went unappealed. That's a fact. I'm not here to argue that. That is a fact. But you are arguing it, Barry.
No, no, I'm not. I'm just saying that, I'm just saying that.
Arguing.
As the enforcer of the ordinance and the, and he is the person that should be setting that timeline. Now, if you want to ask us to talk to the building inspector and see what's going on, but I'm not going to make that determination. I don't have enough information.
But the process is that he made a determination that's appealable to this board. That's what law requires. The law requires you, as a board, to make a determination. We disagree that he didn't set a timeline, and we're asking you to do it, and it's your legal right to do so.
So let me interject. Jason, I mean Attorney Panos, do you think that if we gave a timeline, in reality, we would be giving a timeline to conservation? And then we're putting a timeline on another board, and I personally wouldn't want another board to give us a timeline?
I don't, I don't believe so.
Through the chair. I do want to be able to hear from Attorney Crowe as well, because I want to make sure I have that in front of me as well. But just an initial thought with respect to if we were to entertain an idea of a timeline, we don't need to set a timeline for when they apply. We don't need to set a timeline for when CONCOM makes a decision. We can parse it. It can be, CONCOM, they're actively in front of CONCOM. We know that. At some point, CONCOM is going to make a determination. Once that happens, the clock can start to tick. And if they make it through CONCOM to the next stage to try to apply for a special permit, now the ball's in their court. Whether they believe they have to, or they don't believe they have to, quite frankly, I don't care. I want, whatever their decision is, is their decision, and they're going to stick with it. And we can issue a decision saying, "Well, within X amount of days after CONCOM's decision, whatever the determinative event is." They must do what the building inspector said to do.
Right, right. That's right.
And that's kind of where my thought is right now, but I do want to be able to hear from the other attorney as well, so we get both sides.
Can we get the other?
Here. Briefly. So, again, I understand that additional input may be required. This is a process. We've set forth this idea of establishing a timeline. I know a lot of people, there's been scuttlebutt that we're trying to shut down J.D. Raymond. That's not the case. We just want them to operate within a set of, you know, rules that encourage them to follow industry practices, pile heights, that sort of thing, and limit the amount of erosion and airborne soil coming to our site. So even if the decision isn't made tonight, we know that there's no August meeting for CONCOM. It could be revisited again with more information, although I think Board Member Zalotis's idea also makes a lot of sense. But we're just looking to set some boundaries, and that's all we're asking the board to do.
Okay, we'd like to hear from the other attorney. Just as another thought, would you like to come up? All this will cease and desist if there's no special permit given, correct?
I can't answer that. I have to assume that to be the case?
Yes. It will, it would, I'm sure it would be the case, no question in my mind. Okay, let's hear from the other attorney.
Good evening, and thank you all. For the record, Kim Crowe, Baker Braverman Barbado, counsel for J.D. Raymond. I have with me Will Boyle, representative of J.D. Raymond, sitting over there. I've heard Attorney Panos's comments, and I just want to sort of refocus why we're here. They filed this appeal, the residences filed this appeal, claiming that they're aggrieved by an inability to obtain zoning enforcement from the building inspector. The building inspector did issue a letter in May determining that a special permit was required, and that he was not going to issue a cease and desist order as long as we were proceeding in good faith. That's what we have been doing. They're claiming that they are aggrieved by that. In what aspect, I'm not 100% sure, although timeframes appear to be the case. If this board issues a decision, votes, and issues a final decision, then both parties need to determine, whoever determines that they're aggrieved, whether an appeal is appropriate, and we head to court. In fall of 2021, the appeals court issued a ruling that was a bit of a surprise to a lot of land court judges, but in any event, the appeals court said, "If circumstances have changed, parties can request another zoning enforcement." The court indicates, although it doesn't come right out, but if there's a zoning decision that isn't appealed, maybe that's a different story. My suggestion tonight is to have them withdraw the request for enforcement, and if they determine J.D. Raymond is not proceeding adequately, they can file another request for zoning enforcement with Commissioner Talarico, and he can make that determination. We are in front of Conservation Commission right now. The next hearing is September 14th. At the last meeting, we were obligated to provide written comments within 30 days, which ended today, and provide our updated plans by the end of August. We did submit the written comments today, albeit only about 15 minutes before this hearing began, despite numerous calls to the engineer and reviewing a draft of it at 11:00 a.m. But it is in. We did meet the timeframe. We are planning to meet the timeframe for August. Everything's in motion to continue with that. As far as the special permit is concerned, that application has been drafted. We do intend to file our application for special permit. The letter was based on the fact that I'm expecting an appeal of whatever happens in our favor along the way, and I'm not giving up the arguments that we may not need a special permit if that happens. But we are planning to file it. The rules for the city council, Section 17, says that we need to certify in our special permit application that we have received all applicable permits that are required. In this case, the contours of the site are being set forth on the plan. We're incorporating the fire chief's comments. We're incorporating the Conservation Commission's comments, the peer-review comments. There's fences, there's barriers, there's landscaping, there's a lot of things that are going in. The one outstanding item from the fire chief is water supply engineering that's due by mid-September, and we have another party doing that besides our engineers, so we're hoping that we can incorporate in the August plans. Not 100% sure, but in any event, we will be submitting what's required of us timely. So I ask this board to either deny the application because they have not shown that they're aggrieved by an inability to obtain zoning enforcement. In fact, that's exactly what happened. Or contrary to that, ask them to voluntarily dismiss their appeal. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Three.
Through the chair. But if I'm reading Mr. Talarico's determination, it does say that they are aware they will need to, they will need to apply for a special permit. So that's been determined, hasn't it?
Yeah, so we do intend to apply for the special permit. I want to be very clear on that. We do intend to apply for it, but I, those arguments are in there. The first part of the letter, the arguments are in there to show that they're not actually aggrieved. They're not aggrieved because they obtained zoning enforcement and for a host of other reasons, based on the history of the two properties. But also that to ask this board to essentially flip Commissioner Talarico's decision, there are these other arguments out there that haven't been vetted. We're not asking the board to determine whether or not we need a special permit. We are, at this point, all reviewing Commissioner Talarico's letter that tells us that we need to submit an application.
See, that's what, that's what concerns me, is that we have a letter, a determination from the building inspector that says you need it. But then we've heard in a letter, and we've heard again tonight, that you're not giving up your rights to say you don't need it, but you did, because you didn't appeal it. So what we have in front of us, and this is what's, and I'm not trying to, like, picket things, so this is what I'm looking at, is on black and white, I conclude there's a violation that does exist. They will need to apply for a special permit. I will not be issuing any enforcement action. So I see those are the three aspects of his decision, or especially his determination, it's not a decision. And what was before us is the issuing of enforcement action, and good faith is subjective, where you might believe you're acting in good faith, and you might be. Attorney Panos and his client might disagree that you're acting in good faith, and Attorney, I mean, Mr. Talarico might have a wholly different opinion as to what is good faith and what is not. And that is operating in a gray subjective area when we need to be operating in a black and white area. And that's just why I'm looking at this, saying, "I don't see, if you are intending to apply, and you do have it drafted already, what's the harm in setting a deadline after CONCOM has made a decision, since these are your intentions anyways"?
Just give me one second. So in continuing that, it does say, "If either board denies their approval, if you don't, if you don't get that special permit, the building commissioner is going to put a cease and desist on you." I mean, there's no question about that.
You know, and I think, just in listening to what Steve had to say, and these are my thoughts, I think, you know, at this point, we really need to move to invite a communication from the commissioner to find out what he thinks and determines the good faith has been to this point, and then we can act on that. But I don't think we can do that until we get a communication based on that. Only because in my reading of the letter, it's a determination, it's not an order. He's in communications with them, and predicated on this good faith, he's, obviously has an open-ended date for any application for a special permit. So, I mean, I think we need clarification on all those points, because I don't think we really have anything we can vote on.
Anybody in the audience to speak in favor, or in opposition?
If we don't get a communication?
I believe if we don't get a communication, then we probably have an obligation to put some kind of deadline up for at least further review.
Because we do have to, I mean, the ball's in our court on this. That's, and we've been put in unfortunate position that has been thrown in our court, but it is in our court, and we got to make a decision one way or the other. Isn't it, maybe if we invite Mr. Talarico to come and kind of explain what he means by not issuing enforcement action?
Sure.
To clarify that, that line, I suppose.
Because I don't even think we can act if the commissioner hasn't actually acted yet, so that's what we would generally act on.
I guess we could.
Move to invite him up?
Move to invite him and reserve our position till then.
All right, we'll see if it gets seconded. I'm going to move to invite Commissioner Talarico to the next meeting to inform us as to the good faith efforts to move towards the application of a special permit in this matter. Want to add or amend anything to it, Steve?
And then I suppose if he, the only thing I would add to that is if he doesn't either provide us with further written clarification or appear in person for the hearing that we move forward on what we have.
Yeah, I accept that amendment to the motion, so moved.
I'll second.
All right.
Valvo.
Yes.
Chris.
Yes.
Mary.
Yes.
David.
Yes.
Fran.
Yes.
So we'll revisit this next month.
Can I just, excuse me, ask for a point of clarification? So the motion you just made doesn't require him to physically appear here. He can submit to this board of writing, is that right? Yes. And that would be adequate to satisfy the motion?
Something that, yes, something in writing or in person to clarify what he means by not issuing an enforcement action.
Great. Thank you for that clarification.
All right, we all set? Number three, 212 Newbury Street.
Number three on the agenda is an application of...
Number three on the agenda is an application of 216 Newbury Street LLC for a variance from the provisions of the zoning ordinance 2020 as amended, Section 11.5.2. As it applies to the premise known as 212 Newbury Street in Peabody, Massachusetts, petitioner seeks a variance to erect a wall sign and requires relief to square footage where 75 square feet is allowed and 372 square feet is proposed. Property is in a BR1 zoning district.
Yes, evening, board. My name is Brian Brinkers from Acne Sign Company here in Peabody, and I'm with Bob Masercola and Matt from the Bradford Floor and Home Store that's at the location on Newbury Street. So we've determined that in light of the building's frontage and wall size and distance of viewing from not only Route 1, but there's considerable traffic on Route 95 that has clear view of the building, that the size is appropriate in aggregate, being less than, I think, 15% of the wall area. So when we put together this layout, it shows it is as proportionate, and the signage fits in there quite well. We know it's more. 75 square feet is not a lot, so we get it that there has to be a limit at some point, but when you get into such large facilities like this, and the great distance from Route 95, we feel that the size is, not only looks good, but is, will work and is adequate for the viewing from those distances. Each letter is individually illuminated, it's got a logo to the right, the logo is part of the branding for the business, and the lettering clearly spells out what they do, not only the name of the business, but what they're doing inside, selling floor and home stuff.
Okay. Excuse me, it's my asthma. Questions by the board?
I have a question. What's the distance of the front of the building to Route 1?
I believe it's around 200 feet.
And we're looking for a 104-foot sign?
Well, it's the distance from 95 that's really, is the important part, and that's...
Just my opinion.
Quarter mile.
That's a big, big, big sign.
It's a, it's a size that fits on the building quite well and is viewable from Route 95. We thought that that was very important.
You're not the first person that has been before us, either on Lowell Street or Route 1, that is very concerned with what they can see from Route 95. Yeah.
Another question. Is there any other signage in the front of the property that identifies the business?
For Bradford?
Yes.
There's a freestanding sign that is a group of businesses that are within the building. There's four or five separate businesses, some of them are in the front, a couple fewer out back. The freestanding sign occupies, the store information for each and every one. It's more of a directory.
Safe to assume it's facing the Route 1 north and south traffic, North and 95 folks?
Correct, yes, it's perpendicular to Route 1, and it's double-sided, so it's viewable north and southbound, correct, yeah.
Just through the chair, oh, you all second, Chris? Through the chair. Bradford has their name written on it right now, right?
There's a temporary banner.
Okay, how big is that banner?
I don't know, do you folks know? My guess is it's about three foot by 60 feet.
Okay. Just curious, I saw it today, and I couldn't tell.
Right.
It looked, it looked small, obviously smaller than this, but I couldn't tell how much smaller. And these individually lit letters, they plan to be lit all night long, or are they going to be shut off at a certain point?
Well, they can be lit all night long. I believe there's certain bylaw that states the hours of operation, which customers, I'm sure, want to comply.
I think we're going to put a condition on the lights. I don't think you're going to be selling rugs at 1:00 AM.
1:00 o'clock shut off.
Well, wait, I don't know yet. I'm just...
What time is it?
Yeah, what's your business operation hours?
They would vary.
So we're generally open seven days a week. We close at 6:00 PM, 7:00 PM at the latest.
So what if you shut them off at 9:00, 10:00?
We don't have any, yeah, we could shut them off at 10:00.
Yeah, we'd follow the guidance of the board, you know, whatever the, whatever the city would mandate of us.
What do you think?
So there's, you know, certain, most people are up, well, a lot of people are up past 10:00, and there's certain...
10:00 is fair.
Yeah.
Okay, anybody in the audience to speak in favor, in opposition? Anybody else in the board that wants to say anything?
I'll just, through the chair, I'll just comment, we usually, I mean, you're asking for about five times the size that the ordinance allows, but we, the board's always been big and has a precedence on illuminated signs of various sizes for actual safety of commuters and drivers. So I believe this still kind of fits into that category, although it's massive, but...
Yeah.
It's tough, and you have, it's a different type of sign, but you've got Bruce McClory next door, and his sign spans it, you've got a, it's tough, it's a huge sign.
Yeah.
But it's also a huge building.
Yeah. I'm fine with it.
I don't know.
Can I add one thing? So obviously, we do have a very large storefront, so, you know, the signage that we're proposing is less than 13% of our actual storefrontage. So we just feel that that would give us, you know, the ability to obviously have the visibility that we're looking for, and obviously, as a small business, it's, you know, becoming increasingly challenging for us to compete with, you know, some of the bigger, you know, Home Depots and box stores that are in our area. So we feel that that'll give us a good presence to, you know, be seen by the community and hopefully, you know, have us continued success, you know, in the years to come.
You do not intend to have a sign on the street, anywhere near the street?
There's existing signage in the directory.
Right, but I mean, like what Bruce McClory has, you know, that right on the street, neon illuminating...
Nothing in addition to the existing, no.
Letters before the board.
Motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Motion to approve with the condition that the illuminated light shut off at no later than 10:00 PM.
Second.
Call vote.
Yes.
Chris.
Yes.
Mary.
Yes.
Stephen?
Yes.
Fran?
Yes.
You have been approved.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you very much.
I need to just ask for a two-minute recess, two minutes, no longer than two minutes.
Thank you, honey. Yeah, yeah, thank you.
All right, we're back. Next one is number four. Number four, number four, number four, 682 Lowell Street.
Number four on tonight's agenda is the application of Chabot Jewish Center Incorporated for variance from the provisions of zoning ordinance 2020 as amended, Section 7.1.5. As it applies to the premise known as 682 Lowell Street in Peabody, Massachusetts, petitioner seeks variance to construct open air frame for, I'm sorry, the lighting's bad, I'm just going to say that. I'm going to have to put my flashlight on for this. All right, it's going to open air frame for pergola, oh, pergola 30 feet by 45 feet, and requires relief to accessory structure size where 500 square feet is allowed and 1350 square feet is proposed. The property is located in R1 zoning district.
Hi, my name is Rabbi Nachmi Shustman. I am the rabbi at the Chabot Jewish Center at 682 Lowell Street. I should have done this sooner. Can I hand you guys some pictures? No pictures? Even if I have enough for you guys?
I'm sorry, we don't accept anything late on the evening of the board meeting.
All right. Okay, thank you. So we're here looking for relief on the, on the requirement for, let me phrase this differently. We have a very, if you look at the lot size, we have a very large lot in the back of the Jewish center. As the center has grown over the years, particularly during the warmer months, we put a large tent up in that space, and that's been going on for about five years. With COVID hitting, that became particularly useful, and we continued doing that, and we just put it up for a longer amount of time, from when the weather became decent till the weather became not good anymore. But it's expensive, it's ugly, it's unsightly, and we're looking to, rather than have a tent, which is, requires maintenance and cleaning, et cetera, et cetera, to have a pergola, which is essentially a fixed tent, you know, it's open there, et cetera, and the size that we're seeking is almost exactly the size of the current tent, which is actually physically upright now, and has been during the better weather months for the last five years.
Okay, so the tent that you have up now can be taken down in a second. What you're asking for is an accessory structure, which 500 square feet is allowed, you're asking for 1350, it's too big. We can hear from other members of the board, but I suggest either you half this, or basically, when something like this comes before us, the most we have approved is 750 square feet, and we have to stick by that. That's rules and regulations, zoning board rules and regulations, laws. Right now, I'm only one vote, but as far as I'm concerned, 1350 is way too big. You can, you can hear from other members of the board, we can hear from anybody in the audience, but I would strongly suggest either having this half, or maybe continue till next month and see if you can come up with something different, but if this were to go through, then everybody else would say, well, you know, you did it for one, you have to do it for us too, and we just can't allow that.
Can I respond? I can't speak for other people, and I can't, I understand the concern about setting a new precedent. Having said that, if you've seen our lot, it's literally, we are in the backyard of a lot of other properties, there is sufficient, there's tons and tons of space, and we're simply replacing, you're right, a tent could come down, it's not a few minutes, it's a few hours and a bunch of strong people, but, but the reality is, is for much of the time, it would just sit empty when the, when the weather's not appropriate. 750 square feet would kind of defeat the purpose, because the idea is to be able to fit, you know, holiday services, which we've, again, done in the tent for the last five years. If it's 750 square feet, it just wouldn't fit the amount of people to accomplish what it needs to accomplish.
And I do understand, I really, really do, but we have had other people that had big lots that wanted to put big accessory structures, and we just haven't allowed it. And like I said, I'm only one vote, but it's just, it's just way, way too big.
Through the chair, so in enforcing the zoning ordinance that incorporates the building code, there's two different sections for temporary structures and then permanent accessory structures, so that's where we really have a problem expanding that to a point where we'd be setting a precedent. This is, you're going to have a permanent structure as opposed to what is a temporary structure, so...
When one says permanent structure, they, you presume you're talking about like a house or something with walls, this is open wall, this is like, you know, something you would see in a park.
But it's not movable. It'll be, it would be permanent, and that's, that's, that's the difference. Permanent structure, not permanent. Your tent can be blown away by the wind, it can be taken down tomorrow if need be. What you're asking for is something that would be permanent, and the size that you're asking is just too much.
So is the concern simply that it's breaking a precedent, that you don't want to create a new precedent, or is it fundamentally a problem?
It's against the zoning laws.
I'm hopeful others have a different opinion than you.
Hearing none.
Let's take a microphone to work. I agree with the chairwoman, it's, what's, what's the size of the current building there? It just says one and a half story. How many square feet is that building? Do you know? I don't know exactly, I'm going to guess 3,000 square feet, something like that. I agree with the, with the chair, Madam Chair, it's huge. You know, if 500 square feet's allowed, and you're asking for 1350, it's too big. I'm sorry, I'm not going to support this.
And just as a point of order, just so you're 100%, because we've always, we always tend to offer this to people when they come in, whether it's a garage, we've seen, over the last three, four years, we've seen a lot of garages, accessory structures, that people have created this extra space, a lot of it having to do with COVID, I believe. But we've always made sure the petitioner understands that you have the right to either withdraw this or ask for it continues to come back next week. And then if that happened, I'm sorry, next week, next, next month, next meeting, and if that happens, if we haven't ruled upon it, once we, once we rule upon it and deny it, it creates a potential, creates a potential problem for you. So my recommendation... So my recommendation, you've heard kind of where the board stands, if you get two, if you get two noes, it's denied. And it sounds like you're gonna get two noes.
Understood.
So you may wanna go back to the drawing board, perhaps request a continuance to make it smaller and you have one that's permanent and then maybe you get a tent that has, you can fill it up if you need to during a ceremony or a service.
Can I ask Tony who drew our plans, just to share a word?
I don't know what you're gonna, what you're gonna say that's gonna change 1350 miraculously to 750.
What I would argue is that this is a little bit different than a precedent setting case. This is a religious.
We're not, we, we understand it's religious. We understand, we're looking at the square footage.
But what I was gonna ask is, as we explore our options, if we could continue to the next.
Representing him?
We did the plans. I wasn't aware he was on the ZB A tonight. We, we've consulted with them and worked with El Talarico in getting the variance application in front of, in front of the board.
He can ask, his name is on it.
Can I please have that continuance?
Based on the representation, make a motion to continue to the next meeting.
Second.
Favor?
Aye.
We'll see you next month, sir.
Thank you.
Number five, Fort Jacob Street.
Number five on the agenda is an application of Dennis J. Mills for a variance from the provision of the zoning ordinance 2020 as amended, section 7.2, as it applies to the premise known as Fort Jacob Street, Peabody, Massachusetts. Petitioner seeks a variance to construct in addition and requires relief to floor area ratio where .7 is allowed and .97 is proposed. The property is located in an R2 zoning district.
Good evening, members of the board, and thank you for hearing our request. My name is Dennis Mills, accompanied by my wife, Kristy Mills, and we reside at Fort Jacob Street. We seek relief for a proposed addition in which we exceed the allowable FAR. We are located in an R2 zoning district, which is .7 required and .87 existing and .97 proposed. Our hardship is that we live in an odd-shaped house with a 12 by 12 first-floor exit addition set off of the back. The proposal, if approved, would allow us to add one bedroom while squaring off the house and continuing our existing roof line to the rear of the house. We purchased the house in 2017, at which time our children were five, seven, and 13. With my wife and two youngest children being lifelong Peabody residents and my children now being 10, 12, and 18, my two youngest children are no longer able to share a bedroom. This proposal is in no way of greed in which to add square footage and attempt to sell for more profit, but instead an attempt to add a bedroom to ensure that we have adequate living space to remain in the city. My children are active in youth sports and I volunteer here as their coach and I hope to remain in the city in order to eventually play for Peabody High School. If denied, we may be forced to sell our home with the current housing market and will be priced out of the city for a four-bedroom home. We have also spoken to our abutters who are in favor of this proposal. And so with that, thank you for hearing our request.
Questions, comments by the board?
Just, just for clarification to the applicant, I, I viewed the property. Are you seeking to build a second floor on that current buildout? Same exact footprint, no changes, just a, a second floor on that? What currently is in that bottom floor?
Kitchen.
Kitchen? And the sec, and the addition will be bedrooms?
That's correct.
Concerns? Anybody in the audience to speak in favor? In opposition? Oh, here we go. Ms. Daigle.
Good evening. Julie Daigle, Ward Four, City Councilor. I'm not here on this matter, but I would've been closer if, if I knew. I just have to say, I'm very pleased with your application and presentation and you're not in my ward, but I think it was very thorough and if you were, I would be in support of this and in general, I think this is well thought and it sounds like you're a family that we would love to keep in Peabody. So I am in favor. Thank you.
Anybody else in the audience to speak in favor or in opposition? Hearing none, the matters before the board.
Motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Call, vote, please.
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Barry?
Steven?
Yes.
Grant? Yes, you have been approved. Number six?
So just for the record, I'm gonna immediate, immediate a butter, so I have to recuse myself from this one.
11 Mansfield Street.
Number six on the agenda is the application of Jason and Jennifer Melanson for a variance from the provisions of the zoning ordinance 2020 as amended, section 7.1.5, section 7.2, as it applies to the premise known as 11 Mansfield Street in Peabody, Massachusetts. Petitioner seeks a variance to extend an existing deck on a corner lot and requires relief to pool location, pool distance to public way, pool side yard, deck front yard. The property is located in an R1B zoning district.
Hi, good evening. I'm Jennifer Melanson. I live at 11 Mansfield Street. This is my husband, Jason. And we're looking for a variance to extend our deck to our pool.
Explain that extension a little bit to us. What exactly is there right now?
So last year, we put a, sorry. We put in a slider to our, to a deck, pretty much off to the slider. We did not realize we needed a variance to connect the pool to the deck last year. We, when we put our pool in, we were told six feet from the property line, didn't know that there was a, a variance needed for a corner lot. So we're requesting to extend the deck to the pool and need the relief due to the corner lot.
All set? Anybody in the audience to speak in favor? In opposition? Hearing none, the matters before the board. I hear you.
Move to approve.
Second.
No, we didn't close the public hearing. Move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Move to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? You're all set. You're welcome.
Good luck.
All right. That brings us up to our 40Bs. Before, before we dive right into the 40Bs, I just wanna put out there a few points that maybe are confusing some people about 40Bs. So a 40B application is approved by the state. It's not, it's not something that the city goes looking for. The state of Massachusetts is in favor 100% or more for affordable housing units. A builder will go and apply for a 40B permit to the state. The state then comes out, the state looks at everything, looks at the site, and then if they're happy with it, which usually they are, then they give the builder a comprehensive, not yet. You give, they give the builder a comprehensive permit. So the state issues to the builder a permit to go forward with the 40B. Now, it just so happens, fortunately or unfortunately, that those 40B applications come to the zoning board of appeals of that city for approval or denial. We are on our seventh, eighth 40B application. We have denied one unanimously. And what do you think happened? It went to the state for appeal because the state had already approved that application and the state thought it was fine. So it went into appeal and the state said, no, 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 you have to come back and compromise. So on 40 Oak Street, which was a unanimous denial, we had to come back to the drawing board with legal and we had to compromise, which we did. And I think that that came out very, very well. My point is, short of building, from what I can gather now with the experience we had with the 40Bs, short of building a 40B on top of the San Andreas Fault that you know is going to swallow it up tomorrow, it's very, 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 very hard to deny a 40B application. And let me tell you, this board, we don't, you know, find that we have three before us and say, oh yay, is the, oh yeah, we have 40Bs, that's great. It's, it's a very difficult, we have an entire handbook of rules and regulations. It's different, it's not just a building permit, it's not a variance. It's tedious, tedious work that we have to go through and we have to make sure we're doing it right. And at the end of the day, it's a compromise. Is it fair? What's fair? One party gets exactly what they want, the other party doesn't, you know, doesn't disagree. That's really not fair. So there's really nothing completely fair in a 40B. What it is, is it's a compromise. Hopefully both parties will agree to those compromises. But please realize that, you know, I know people say, oh, they should deny it, they should deny it. Wow, we'd love to deny all of them and pretty soon, we will be in safe harbor and, and hopefully next year and the year after, then the year after, we don't have to listen to any more 40Bs because we will be above that 10%. The state of Massachusetts is over 100,000 units statewide behind on their affordable units. It just so happens the Peabody has the location. We're close to all the various highways. It's a desirable location. I don't, you know, I can't speak for why the builders come here and find property which is available to build the 40Bs, but they do. But please remember, it's a state-approved project and then it comes to us. And we have to do our best to appease everybody and to do the best build-out that we can. So it's, it seems like it's easy, it's really, really hard and we really try to do our best. So I just wanted to put that out there before we go into our, what do we have, three tonight? Three more tonight. And thank you for your understanding. Okay, Attorney Kelty.
Thank you, Madam Chair and members of the board. My name is John Kelty. I'm an attorney, 40 Lowell Street, Peabody, Mass. Appearing on behalf of subsidiary of Trammell Crowe, who was hoping to develop the property at 128 rear, very rear, Newbury Street. And I have, I'm here this evening to present updated plans that deal exclusively with landscaping. It has been of principal concern to this board as to how much of a buffer we're going to be able to provide for the residents that are immediately adjacent to this subdivision or to this proposal. And with me this evening is Rob Clark from Allen &amp; Major, who is our landscape architect. And he will present the most recent developments as were presented in an email to the board. And Rob will present those to the board this evening. And following which, I would just summarize a meeting I had with the school department in which the, well, actually, I'll summarize it now. The school department, I, the, I provided a letter that summarized that meeting in essence, they have said that they will access these units, any school children therein will be accessed directly from Route One, there will be no bus stop or there'll be no bus route on Winona Street dealing with this particular development. And I had asked Lisa Connors of the school department to provide a letter as we go forward, which again summarizes the statements that I've made this evening. And with that, I would turn the presentation over to Rob Clark.
Reiterate that, because this is very important. The, the school buses will access exclusively from Route One and no drop-off or pickup will be on or over Winona Street. Everything will be entered and exited from Route One. Correct.
For the record, my name is Robert Clark from Allen &amp; Major Associates. Go to the next slide. So we've been meeting with the abutters for the last two years. As you can see on Winona Drive, at the top of the screen, there's about, about seven or eight abutters that abut this property. The red image at the top shows about 70 feet. That plan was changed three times. It was previously 20 feet off the property line and that's the edge of pavement. Then they pulled it back about 40 feet and now it's 70 feet. All the large growth trees have been saved all along the property. There's an aerial underneath the color rendering and there's three levels of screening set forth for the abutters. There's a white six-foot vinyl fence on the top right side of the image there that runs along the entire property line in red and then terminates back at both walls. There's a gate that's going to be able to be at, maintain accessibility for people to come in and maintain between the residents and the abutters. And then there's large tree plantings all along the perimeter of the parking field as well as a secondary fence. We also strategically located those carports for the abutters so that they weren't looking back at the facade. There was balconies that were removed and then a large screening of arborvitae's around the pool area.
Interrupt for a second?
Sure.
So we do realize as a board that we have a new plan that will be submitted that reflects a different amount of apartments. We haven't received that yet. And I believe at the last meeting, I asked for specific trees, specific, you know, okay, we have trees. I, I, I want specific names of trees, the height that they are when they're planted. I, I need that to be very specific, if you don't mind.
So Mason, would you like to go to the next slide? So there was a, there was a tree chart proposed on the planting plan. There's, there's firs, there's abes, piceas, abes. Those are the evergreen trees at the top left-hand. There's pin oaks, that's the one to the top right. There's a red maple down at the bottom left. Then the arborvitae's in the middle of the page, those are also an evergreen tree that all, all the deciduous trees will be planted at three-and-a-half-inch caliper and all of the evergreen trees are about six to eight feet in height.
I can't really see the, do we have how many of each we're planting?
Yes, there's quantities on the black and white plans that were submitted as part of the special package. There's quantities of all the plants, the genus and species names of all the plants and the locations are on the plans as well.
Okay. Great.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right, you're welcome.
The only material that I'd like to add at this time is that we do have two of our peer reviews back, one from Horsley Witten and the second from World Tech, which was exclusively reviewing our traffic. And we expect that we need about 10 days, two weeks to turn that and respond to those and we're currently working on that. And as the board had mentioned, we have advised all of the firms that are conducting peer review that they are reviewing for a total of 180 units and not 220. And as such, those plans submitted to this board are being modified to reflect the 180. And my expectation is that will be done within about one week, and we'll file them.
Okay, so next month, we will look at the new revised plan and see where that takes us as far as any other questions, concerns, or what have you. We do have some correspondences that we need to accept and read into the record.
I'm going to read the following into the record. One is a letter dated July 23rd, 2022, to the Zoning Board of Appeals. Sorry, can't hear me. This is regarding the Trammell Crowe Residential Development, 128 Newbury Street. The regarding line is, yes, in favor. I am writing this letter to you to voice my support for the residential development in the rear of 128 Newbury Street. I am the owner of the Honeydew Donuts at 130 Newbury Street. I have been at this location for almost nine years. Not only do I think that this property has stayed underdeveloped for too long, but I believe this project has finally found an experienced and professional development team with Trammell Crowe Residential. Sincerely, George Tetchy. Next correspondent is from Mark Baranski. It's dated July 25th, 2022. It is to Carla McGrath. And this correspondence asked Carla to share this with the board, give any updates as possible. So the correspondence is, okay, that's it, that's the only one. Please share this with the board. Leanne will update if they would like, but as one of the most impacted parties, she is anxious for the project to move forward. Thank you. And relevant is attached to that is an email from Leanne Ginaldo. It is dated August 19th, 2021, and it is to the board, the mayor of Peabody, and Consulor Sazlaw. It says, good afternoon, all. I have had the opportunity to meet with the developers several times for the proposed development off of Route 1. My hope is that this development will proceed. As many of you know, my family has been heavily impacted by the work that has been done by previous developers, with nothing being accomplished except a lot of flooding, worrying, and despair. With the rain today, and knowing how even though the rain has stopped, my pool keeps filling because of the retention ponds they have put behind my house, it's very scary. I believe that this is an opportunity for things to finally get back to a state of normalcy. I believe this will stop constant worrying every time we get heavy rain that we are going to flood yet again. I also hope, once this project is completed, we can stop carrying flood insurance due to the work that has been previously performed. I am tired of looking into this monster of a mountain when I sit on my deck and worry about the water and the pools and the backup and what they're, and when they're all collecting. I'm hoping you continue giving this project a green light so work can start, and we can stop looking at this monstrosity behind the house. Sincerely, Leanne Mayo. Next correspondent is dated July 21, 2022. It's from Jack Irwin. It's to the Zoning Board of Appeals. It says, dear members of the Zoning Board of Appeals, as a director of order to the residential site at 128 Newbury Street, I would like you to know that I strongly support the proposed Trammell Crowe residential development on this site. Trammell Crowe Residential has been proactive and totally transparent with their presentations. They have met with the abutting neighbors several times, offering solutions to each of our respective issues, particularly creating extensive landscaping. I feel very comfortable supporting Trammell Crowe Residential in helping to resolve the many problems that have existed on the entire site for too long. I feel that they will make the entire area a better place in which to live. Sincerely, Jack Irwin. No way on earth I'll be able to read that. Glasses.
Wow.
Yeah, good luck.
So this is another, another, I'm sorry. This is another letter dated July 21st, 2021, from Heather Siegel. It is blurry, and I need a magnifying glass, but at this point, I'm just going to take it for the record that she is in favor. This is a letter in favor of the development. And this is from The Ultimate, the clothing store, yes. So the Heather Siegel is thoroughly in favor of this. And then we have, you just read Jack Irwin, I thought.
It's the same letter.
Okay, so.
Move to, move to accept correspondence?
We, we have a few more. We have the Mr. Kelty's letter to, to accept on the buses, and we have two October 11th letters in opposition. August 11th.
Oh, yeah.
Do you have those?
Got them, right in.
Okay.
And the next correspondence is from Ryan Cox, dated August 11th. It's to the mayor and the board. It says, good morning. I am writing you this letter in opposition to the development at 128 Newbury Street. I live at 11 Hemrick Road and have lived there for the past 36 years. There are many issues that need to be addressed. First off, the size of the project is way too big for that area of the city. With something that size, you would be adding way too many cars to the area of Route 1 that is already problematic. People already use Pine Street, Lowell Street, Lake Street, Winona Street to bypass traffic at the light. This would just be adding to that problem. Winona Street would probably see the most increase in traffic where people would be entering the complex. That brings up another issue. Winona Street has no sidewalks. People already walk on the street, and that would be very unsafe. This would just add to this issue. Another issue is the amount of water that would be used. We are already in a water band, and almost every summer, there is one. Again, this is just adding to that issue. Peabody is already in need of a new high school due to the amount of kids in Peabody. How many more students would this be adding to the already overflowing school system? More teachers would be needed to add, need to be added, and this would most likely be paid by a tax increase. Never mind a tax increase when a new high school is built. I am asking you to drastically lower the amount of units. It is very unfortunate that Safe Harbor was claimed and then taken back. Just speaks volumes on how the city of Peabody has mishandled this proposal. Thank you, Ryan Cox. Another correspondence is from Derek McCarthy, and it is to the board and the mayor, dated Thursday, August 11th, 2022. To whom it may concern, as a lifelong Peabody resident, I am opposed to the proposed 40B 220-unit development at 128 Newbury Street. Since my 38 years living and close to 25 years working in Peabody, I have noticed a dramatic increase of automobile traffic on the Peabody streets. What used to be a quick three-minute drive to get from St. Anne's Church to Foster Street can, can now be upwards to 10 to 15 minutes, depending on the time of day. In addition to my traffic concerns, I am also concerned about the increase in residential property taxes. I purchased my home in 2013, and every year, there is an increase in my property tax. I believe that that increase was caused by the New Higgins Middle School that was built. My concern is with overdeveloping Peabody when there will be a New Higgins Middle School to be at the capacity, and another large school will need to be built, let alone the additional teachers hired and will raise my rates again. As a lifelong Peabody resident, I love this city. However, I believe that if the overdevelopment that has been the normal practice in Peabody during the 38 years that I have lived here is hurting all the residents in Peabody, please do whatever is in your power to keep the proposed 40B 220-unit development at 128 Newbury Street from happening. Derek McCarthy. And finally, there is the correspondence from Melissa Oderisio, dated August 11th, 2020, to the board and to the mayor. To whom it may concern, I am writing to you to express my concerns about the 128 Newbury Street development. We live on Forenza Road, which is off of Winona and close to the proposed project. The amount of traffic already on that windy, narrow street is dangerous, especially during the winter months. There are limited sidewalks, and many children who live in these neighborhoods. Getting on and off Route 1 from Winona Street is already really crowded and dangerous with the gas station on one side and the Honeydew Donuts with many cars entering and exiting. In addition, I worry about the impacts that this will have on an already crowded McCarthy Elementary School. In closing, I strongly oppose this development and want to express my concerns to you. Warmest regards, Melissa Oderisio. Move to accept correspondence?
Okay, that's been, that's been, those have been accepted.
That the board is aware that there is no access to this property going to be developed from Winona, and we've cut our initial proposal of 220, is now down to 180.
Right, and we need to see that next month. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak on this project at all?
Ryan Cox, 11 Hemrick Road, obviously Peabody. So I do have a quick few questions. It was obviously an intent for the ZBA to claim Safe Harbor when Peabody was over the 10% of affordable housing. You did this with a letter dated May 17th, 2022. I ask why was it sent, who sent it, and why was it taken back on June 2nd, 2022? And whose decision was that?
Okay, Ryan. We, we claimed Safe Harbor, and there was, there's a time period where you can make other decisions. There are no secrets here. I'm not going to hide anything from you. There was a meeting, or meetings, with the builders and the attorney and the mayor, and a compromise was reached, and they decreased their units from 220 to 180. It seemed that that was making everybody happy, and Safe Harbor was reneged and brought back to the zoning board. And at that point, the zoning board decided that let's hear it and see where it goes and see if we can make this work.
Okay, so that brings up some other questions that I have for you guys. With the application that was submitted to Mass Housing, there's a purchase and sale agreement from Race LLC to Multi Land Family that expired 8/22/2022. Has a new purchase and sale agreement been submitted to Mass Housing or yourself?
Have the attorney come up and discuss that?
I couldn't act, I could not actually hear the question from where I was sitting.
So the question is, purchase and sale agreement?
There has been an extension of the terms of that agreement, and we can share that with the board. The answer, has it been shared? No. However, we're happy to do so.
Okay, that would be nice.
So I ask at this time, since that has not been shared, that this be put on pause? Because they don't own control of the current land, which is part of the final improvement with Mass Housing.
Well, you bring up a dilemma that has never come before us before.
It's, the determination would have to be whether or not they actually have ownership or control of it. As you've heard, Attorney Kelty, there's been an extension to that deadline. Based upon that there, we accept that.
Do you have that agreement?
We do not.
So then therefore, you, it expired.
We've been told tonight that it has not expired, that it's been extended.
Do you have it in writing?
So I'm not, I'm not trying to engage into a back-and-forth argument with you. I'm stating that what we have before us is the original plans, which we've been reviewing over the last several months. We, you've posed a question. Attorney Kelty has posed an answer. The answer has been, there is an extension. When a PNS is extended, the PNS continues to be valid and in good force. That has been told to us tonight. Attorney Kelty said he would provide that to us in the next meeting. The city's in the middle of peer review with this, which is an expensive process. We're going to allow that to continue forward. And then Mr. Kel, Attorney Kelty said the next meeting, he will provide us with whatever that extension is on the PNS to show there is still possession and control.
Okay, I look forward to that. Also, I have a few other questions. One of the biggest things was the access to Winona Street. I noticed that there, on drawing C 102, there's a 15-foot gap that allows vehicles to exit the Honeydew parking lot into the property, and that there is a no-left-turn sign. And my question is, who is going to enforce that since it's on private property?
Attorney Kelty? So Ryan, you do realize that the plans you're working off of are going to be totally changed with the reduction in units? But you have a good question.
Currently, the ones that are submitted to the zoning board?
Right, no, you have a good question. Right.
Right. So what Mr. Cox is inquiring about is a section of the accessway, the easement that extends from Route 1 and into our property. The question is, why is there a gap in, what, the striping?
I understand why there's a gap. It's for, you have a right-of-way, and it's for Honeydew and The Ultimate to exit. But my question is, who is going to prevent people from turning and coming out of the property into that area? A no-left-turn sign on a private property is not going to work.
Well, that is what we've proposed, and we also have some, there are barriers that are somewhat flexible, such that they will not total your car. However, if you are to drive over them, you will be impacted, and it will be impacted somewhat negatively. And there is a gap in those, inasmuch as the people exiting, exiting Honeydew cannot be denied the access to this particular, to this particular driveway because it is the entryway to that entire parcel of land. So yes, there is a gap that would allow you to come from Honeydew to get to that exiting lane of this right-of-way.
You know, that is, unfortunately, somebody leaving the apartments wanting to get quickly to Big Y will probably use that. I think that's something that the board's going to have to look at seriously because, Ryan, I have to agree with you, who's, who could enforce that? You know, who could actually, right, I mean, yeah, that's, that's, that is a concern.
I also have a few more concerns with also that exit. If you look at drawing C 103, it overlays their property. But if you look in the shaded area... area, it also has another parcel of property that states that there would be a storage unit, a single dwell, sorry, one-story building, basically three-story buildings. It also says that the old cool hall, masonry to be razed. Now, I want to know why that's in there. Now, the only reason that I can think that is overlaid in this property is because you got the CAD file from someone.
This question is, why is what?
So if you, if you look here, it says that... Single-story building, single-story building, single-story building, three-story building, existing foundation to be razed. Now, the only way that you would get this is if you overlaid this on the existing CAD file that was provided. Who provided this CAD file?
Who provided the CAD file?
Yes.
The CAD file was provided by Allen and Major.
Okay, so do they propose to do all this work?
No.
So then why is this in there?
To show the proximity of this right-of-way in relation to the total area, so that you could see where Route 1 and the impact on any of the other parcels.
Now, these buildings aren't there, correct?
Yeah, one of them is Peterson, another is...
This is, this is a...
Oh, the Chinese restaurant?
No, that is not the Chinese restaurant. You overlaid it on a parcel that has not been developed yet, and I ask that question why?
Oh, yes, for the, yes. Yeah, these, these parcels of land were the proposed, and it's to coordinate the stormwater runoff, so that we would show the plan that had been presented, which has some of its runoff collecting in an area where there is a relationship between this development and that. So that's why they're on the plan.
Okay, so this poses another problem. I noticed, thank you, I noticed in your lease, it says that it will be enforced. Who is going to also enforce the other developments, that they cannot make a right-hand turn into that easement that you guys have?
Clients do have certain rights in this entire undeveloped portion of land, and they would have the ability to police the use of the right-of-way, and simultaneously, they would have the authority to police the use of the right-of-way and, and the remaining, the remaining amount of land.
So I would also like to bring up what you touched on, which was the planting schedule. That has not been submitted. I understand that they said there'll be, you know, 36 trees here, 32 trees here. If I was a landscaper, I would be given a plan, and I would be told, this is where this tree is going, and I would like to see that.
So, so would I. And the reason that we're not, tonight, asking similar questions like you are, is because we're waiting for that new 180 plan. And once we get that new 180 plan, we will be asking some of those questions also, Ryan, at the end of this whole thing, or any 40B. The decision is lengthy, it's 40 pages, and it is conditioned. So if they say we're going to put eight feet, eight-foot maple trees, we probably will say, uh-uh. We would rather have 12-foot abovites, and that would be a condition. They have to abide by all our conditions, otherwise all bets are off.
Which I understand.
Right, so, believe me when I tell you, I want a forest buffer, because these people, you know, you included...
I'm not a direct rebutter, but I do agree.
Right, and, and when we get that new plan, believe me, you know, this is great, okay, you know, we got this, I got the number of trees, blah, 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 but, yeah, I want, as much as of a schedule and where it's going, how many, and I know it might seem not really that important, but in this particular instance, this land has been desert, sandstorm, bunch of rocks, horrible thing for, for the neighbors, and that forest buffer is important, I think, for, for, my God, I mean, these poor neighbors, it's awful. So, yes, I agree with you with the landscaping, and you have my word, we are going to take care of it.
Okay, I still do have a few more questions, if you don't mind.
Go ahead, Ryan, you know, it's not my bedtime yet.
All right, so in drawing C-104, it states that water and gas will be connected on Winona Street. Proposed connections to existing gas service shown in coordination proposal, only existing location of gas service to be connected. Final connection will be, obviously, by the, which would be national grid. Now, that, that poses an issue. There is no gas past Lindauer Street, Winona Street. So my question is, you have an easement on Corral Road. Will that be used? And I ask that the Board ask, where will the final connections be? Because Winona Street does not have gas. So that gas main would have to be brought up Winona Street to the location. The only alternative is to go up Corral Road. Now, I think you guys already know that, because that's where you put the transformer. You put the transformer in the back left corner to bring in the utilities. Otherwise, you would have put it closer to Winona Street.
Any comment? Attorney Kelty, any comment on that?
What was the question? Why are we showing gas? And where are we bringing it from?
So the question is...
Right.
You want me to work that? The question is, Winona Street does not have gas at that location.
Yes.
Correct.
I believe that's the case, yes.
It is very well correct. The nearest gas is at the corner of Lindauer and Winona Street. You have an easement on Corral Road, correct?
I don't know that to be the case. I know there is a lot that we are not acquiring.
No, you are, it's in the plan.
Well, okay.
You have an easement to access that for utilities. Is that your plan? Because...
Do you happen to know?
It depends on what the utility company tells us.
That'll be worked out with the utility company. We will either have to bring it up to this point on Winona, or if the utility company suggests that we connect there, then we would do that.
And may I interrupt? So during third-party review, the city will address this. I mean, the city would never let gas line hookups just happen by chance. That's one of the important parts of third-party review. Water, traffic, sewer, gas, et cetera, et cetera. And then they have to come back with all the answers. It goes back to the city. If the city doesn't like the answers, it's a back and forth, back and forth. Believe me when I tell you, it's a long, tedious project, process.
All I'm trying to do is bring up the point that...
Oh, and I think that's great, no, I think that's great.
That they've proposed is not accessible for what they're trying to do.
And, and...
And Corral Road will be impacted.
Right, so...
And that's the only point that I'm trying to make.
And I understand...
And that's why they put the transformer where they put it.
But it might not stay there. Just because it's in the plan, it might not stay there, because there's still a lot of peer review that has, has to happen.
And I understand that, but if you're bringing utilities in on Winona Street, you would put your transformer closer to Winona Street, not in the back corner next to Corral.
Right, so what you're, what you're talking about here is peer review. This is all part of peer review. When we set the schedule, the chair sets the schedule, it's, it's handled on a meeting-by-meeting basis. This has not come before us yet. So we don't have a lot of these. Just because we have the plan, doesn't mean we have city feedback, doesn't mean we have peer review feedback, and the applicants haven't been able to provide their feedback to that feedback. So these are good questions, we're writing them down, they're on the record. You can certainly raise them again, you can send it by way of email, you can come up and again discuss it with us. But also to Keith's point, this, this is public comment, and we're quickly approaching, I think, a, like he said, a debate. But we're supposed to have one person at a podium at a time, asking questions, which can then be answered. I just don't want this to turn into a confrontational situation, when it doesn't need to be. These are all very important questions, if you have more, ask them. But just so you know, these, we may not have an answer, because peer review hasn't happened on that aspect of it.
But I'm asking the ZBA to take all these into consideration.
We are, yeah.
Okay? Because I have reviewed what is submitted...
Yep.
...before you, and these are the issues that I see.
That's fine, we're just saying we may not have an answer for you.
And I know, but I'm asking that you do find out those answers before you approve this project.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
No question about it. Okay, anybody else in the public to speak on 128 Newbury Street? Need a motion to continue this.
A motion to continue to our September meeting.
All in favor? Any opposed? Okay, now we're on two, 58 Pulaski Street. No, what I want you to read is, and before, I'll, I'll do that. Before that we have this presentation, we need a motion to accept all these correspondences. July 12, Bob Langley memo, including from 624, HWG Stormwater Drainage Peer Review memo, 629, HWG Environmental Peer Review, 77, Hays Revised Plan Unit Reduction, 715, Lower Level Revision Plan, 715, Third Floor Revision Plan, 721, Langley Memo, including 718, World Tech Traffic Parking Peer Review, 728, Thomas Letter in Opposition, 8-3, Hays' Response to Horsley Witten, 8-3 Revised Site Plan, 8-3, Van Ness Response to World Tech, 8-3, Van Ness Cover Letter, and 8-11-22, Peter Letter in Favor, which I am going to read right now. We have this letter in favor dated August 11. To whom it may concern, my name is Peter, owner of Tire Depot and Auto Service located on Willard Street in Peabody, Mass. We are in favor of the Mills project to put apartment units. The property looks 100 times better now that they moved it in there. I look forward to seeing new apartments going in the back of the Mills building. Thank you, Mr. Peter Willard. Peter, what's his last name?
Mandelise.
Mandelise. I need a motion to accept all this.
A motion to accept all stated correspondence?
All in favor? It's all been accepted.
Good evening, members of the Board, Madam Chair. My name is Jason Panos, practicing law at 246 Andover Street, Peabody, Massachusetts. I'm here on behalf of the applicant, the residences at Mills 58 LLC. I'm accompanied by Tony Cappacetti from Hays Engineering, and the project principal, Edward Greeley, and the, the project manager, Julie Dagel, on behalf of the Mills. Tonight is largely a technical presentation, where we're going to talk about the technical, technical aspects of the, the items that were submitted to you, mostly having to do with traffic and parking reconfiguration. We also have a report on peer review. And so with that, I'm going to make this as short as I possibly can. I'm going to turn it over to Tony through the chair.
Take it away. Thank you again for the record, Tony Cappacetti, Hays Engineering, 603 Salem Street. So since we've last been in front of you, we, last time we talked, we had reduced the number of units from 51 to, to 45. We had just received peer review from Horsley Witten Group for Stormwater Environmental, as well as World Tech for traffic, and we've since responded. Just to refresh everyone's memory as to the building orientation, the building that we're, we're seeking to renovate for residential units is Building A. Buildings B and C are also on the same parcel, include a variety of commercial uses. And then across the Pulaski rear is Building D, and this is important, because we are moving some of the parking from the ABC lot onto the D lot. Peer review. So we've responded, as I said, to both of the peer reviews that we've received. We're still waiting on comments regarding water and wastewater. However, we did sit down with Bob Langley, went through our responses that we had submitted. He was generally in agreement, was passing them on to the peer reviewers. We also discussed potential water wastewater issues. Both Mr. Langley and myself felt that, given the industrial nature of that area, the residential use is a lesser water wastewater generator, so there shouldn't be any issues. But again, we are awaiting Weston and Sampson and, I believe, Ty and Bond for, for those reviews. Just to kind of give you an update, stormwater. The stormwater design that we had provided did meet the mass standards under redevelopment. However, there was a stormwater pipe that goes under the existing building. Horsley Witten said that, you know, maybe that's poor planning to, to maintain the existing stormwater pipe, although it has been there for well over 100 years. And they also said, maybe you could do something a little more for stormwater and infiltrate some of the rooftops. We agreed to do that, so what you're seeing in blue is the relocation of an existing drain, an additional stormwater infiltration area that'll take the rooftop runoff from B and C, which are not part of the project. Building A already has its own infiltration area, and then connect back up to that existing pipe, so we wouldn't have to go into the, into the resource area to, to accomplish this work. Transportation, what World Tech asked for was some additional sidewalk along the property frontage to enhance pedestrian connectivity to Pulaski Street. So we did widen our existing concrete sidewalk to five feet in width and extend that concrete sidewalk along our frontage, and then we're working on adding some connectivity to the existing sidewalk network on Pulaski Street. There was some question about parking, the existing parking, there's 112 existing line spaces between the, the two sites. We're proposing 321 line spaces, which is 18 more than what the zoning requirement works out to, and we went through every use in the buildings and provided a zoning table, or parking table for that. If you take the 100 spaces that we've set aside for residential parking, there'd be an increase of 109 spaces for the commercial uses that already exist there. We haven't proposed any additional commercial uses, we're relocating some of them to different buildings, but from the existing situation as it stands, there'd be an additional 109 stripe spaces. Van Ness is currently performing a parking utilization study for all the buildings, just to see how many spots are being occupied at any given time. So we'll report back to that once it's done. And then upon World Tech's review of the material submitted, we'll file for the variance for the parking lot, moving the parking to the other side. We just want to make sure we have, the, the plan that gets presented to the ZBA for the variance is the one that's going to move forward. So, that went through all the changes, and yes, it is, it's on Waters River. So we are the, as Jason pointed out, we are the oceanfront property in Peabody. So, the one. So that's, that's where we stand currently. I'll pull the plan back up for you, but if there's any questions on the technical aspects, I'd be more than happy to, to answer them.
And if I could just add to what Tony indicated, we are waiting for responses on traffic and parking peer review. However, as Tony indicated, they have met, and everybody seems to be on the same page. But until we get that physical response, I want to wait to file that variance I've been talking with you about, just by way of update. Thank you.
Great. Do we have any comments right now? Public, public people in the audience that would like to speak, why don't you come on up, make a little line, make a little line, name an address, or name and who you are, what you're doing... what you're doing. Would you like to say good things? Would you like to bring me a pizza?
My name's Sue Jacobson. I actually live in Boston, but I'm a... Thank you. So again, my name's Sue Jacobson. I actually live in Boston, and I'm a long-term tenant at the building at Mills 58. I'm an owner of an antique shop in the building. I've been there since before Ed and his team took over, so I've had a front row seat to all the changes. And I can tell you that every upgrade has brought us a vast improvement in the building. And he's been attracting a variety of wonderful and different entrepreneurial businesses that interact well with each other. We've literally had customers walk in because they were at a different business in the building for some other service, like the hair salon or the pizza, and buying items from us. It's like, it's just a great, it's like a great neighborhood. We all respect and admire each other. We buy coffee and we go to the food court. We get our hair done at the salon, and it's just been wonderful. So as a shop owner with plans to stay in the building for as long as I remain in business, I can only see an upside to allowing residences as part of the complex. It'll bring even more patients to the shops, to the restaurant, to the salon, and I think it can only improve the quality of life for everyone in the building and enhance the safety of the area because there will be round-the-clock activity at the site. I don't know all the little details about their plans, but just based on what I've already seen about what the Mills 58 team has done in the very few short years they've taken over the Mills, I trust it will be of high quality and will only represent a great improvement to the area. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good job. Hi, my name is Frank Martino, owner of 58 Marketplace. I'm in favor, 200%. What I'm feeling here is, since I've been here close to two years now, we created this family, this group, this community. So we're bringing in the business to our facility, offering fine, fine dining, but it's the commercial customers that are also coming in, up the street, Pulaski Street, all the way to the V, down towards, we'll say, Danvers area, Salem will bring in them in, right? But it's the residential that I think is going to put us over the top. The feeling that I get of having, of being a family and we're having all our children work at our restaurant and my niece and nephews, I think what we're going to have is some type of nucleus in this facility, and we're going to create this strong bond. It's like another little city in a larger city, and I think it's something that's going to be incredible, beyond what we can imagine. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name's Joe Bentencourt. I live at 14 North Central Street here in Peabody. I'm also an architect with a design studio here that I started a couple of years ago. Prior to that, I worked in Boston for 28 years, and I'm very familiar with these project types. I've done many of them. I think what Ed and his team are proposing is really amazing. I'm in full support of the project, and the reason for that is because of the trends that we've been seeing in terms of use types for these types of projects. So residential is essential to the success of these types of projects. So we talk about mixed use, retail, commercial. Residential is sort of that third piece that is the necessary ingredient for success. We've seen precedents in Cambridge, Somerville, East Boston, Salem, Beverly. So because of that, I'm in full support of residential in this area. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Hi, Lisa Gagnon, Salem. I've been in Eddie's unit for about three, I'm going on my fourth year, and since getting there, I just felt like it was a big community. And I just think that residence is going to be the missing piece, and I...
What do you have there? What kind of a business?
I have a dance and fitness studio. So I think having residents, being able to come down and utilize all of us for all our different, you know, it's like a little city is basically what it is. So I think I'm for it, totally for it. Thanks.
Thank you very much.
Hi, Rochelle Agneto, owner of Salon CC, and I just want to say I am total favor of this project. I think it will bring a massive amount of customers to all the existing businesses that are already there. We've all been so hard hit over the last couple of years, and I think it's really going to do a lot of good. And I just love how it has developed that part of Peabody. I'm a lifelong resident of Peabody. I was not allowed to even go down to that part of Peabody when I was younger, so it's really nice to see it being developed the way it is.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Kathy Wells. I live at 22 West View Circle, and I'm a neighbor, and I represent the neighbors. And I have to say, these guys have done a great job over the last few years. It's, I think this is the first time that I've ever said something positive up here about wanting to have them go through with it, but they've done a great job. They've proved themselves. They've communicated with the neighbors. It's all good, and we've been very happy with what they've done, and we're all for it. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. And that is key, talking to the neighbors. And I want to commend the entire work team for that. Anybody else to speak? Yes, Mr. Greeley.
Ed Greeley, 58 Pulaski Street, Peabody. I wanted to, I wasn't planning on addressing the board, but after what I just heard, I feel compelled to want to address the board. The residents and the businesses stated exactly what we've been aiming for over the last three and a half years. We've been trying to put forward a product that is, are a complement to one another. I think we just heard it. They can, they can work amongst one another. They can generate, they can generate revenues with one another. They can exist with one another in a friendly, professional, respectful environment. I, and I think for the most part, if you talk to anybody outside of the gentleman who's about to speak after me, I think for the most part, I would say 90% of the abutters and the residents are not against this project. And quite frankly, they're not opposed to it because it makes sense. Where I struggle is being told that it doesn't make sense. And I just want to, I guess I just want to talk bluntly without a rehearse. I, I met with the attorney representing Sideways LLC and VRRM LLC, excuse me, I met with the owners that the attorney represents, and Mr. Deland from Deland's Electric about a couple of months ago. And we did a walkthrough on our plan. We discussed our plan, and personally, I thought it was a pretty decent meeting. I actually took a couple of the recommendations that were made, and I integrated them into the, into the plan. About a month ago, at our last hearing, it was really difficult for me to sit here and listen to the attorney that represents Wayside talk about how there's a potential safety issue with this project. It really bothered me. I spent a good amount of time working with the Peabody Police Department, the Peabody Fire Department, getting feedback from residents, you know, who pay taxes in the city. We've been doing that for the better part of a couple of years, Kathy and the residents that live in her neighborhood. And we took a lot of that feedback, and we integrated a lot of that feedback into our plan. And to be told that it's, that we have a safety issue, to me, it's downright, there's no basis for it. And, put it this way, over the last month, I've been paying attention, a lot more to my abutters than I had been in the previous three years, because I found it very difficult to understand how our project that has spent millions of dollars on cleaning up that section of town, bettering our product, bettering our property, how we could be, I didn't understand how we could be sinking all this effort and time and money into a project that is now being deemed as a potential safety hazard. Well, let's just say I've been paying attention to now to my abutters because of what has been mentioned by the Wayside attorney. And I find it awful antagonizing that I'm being told that what I'm about to put forward is a safety hazard when my recommendation to Attorney Shaheen would be to maybe recommend to his client that they pay a little bit more attention to their own safety. I'm not going to get specific at this particular hearing, but I will if need be get specific at the next hearing. Over the last three years, we have, like I've mentioned, we've been developing our real estate. At the last hearing, two days before the last hearing here in front of the ZBA, filed with the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, with the Secretary of the Corporations Division, Sideways LLC and VRRM LLC, who Mr. Shaheen represents, filed a certification of amendment for the buying, the purchasing, and the development of real estate. So they changed the way that they operate. And now, all of a sudden, with Massachusetts, now they're attempting to get into the real estate buying, selling, and development business. And I find that a little interesting, based on another formal hearing that I am currently involved with, with the city council. At the last city council hearing on another matter, and I think it's important that I bring it up because I believe a couple of you were not made aware of this, Building D, which is one of the product, which is one of the properties that is being mentioned here tonight for the re-administration of some parking, was requesting admission into what is the Mill Overlay District, which a couple of years ago was a district that was formed for businesses like Frankie Slice, Lisa Gagnon, Rochelle, who spoke, businesses like theirs could come into this property and have the right to operate, generate revenues, and support their families. Mr. Shaheen got up here about a month ago, and he said that we will be in favor of Mr. Greeley having this Building D added to the Mill Overlay District, but only under the condition that we too are allowed into that same district. And I have to tell you, that kind of bothered me a little bit. And the reason is, is for the better part of the last three years, we've been working our butts off, we've been spending lots of money, we've been doing the right thing, we've been working with the local politicians, the local building inspectors, the building commissioner, and we've been trying to do everything the right way, working with the residents, working with the businesses. So the reason I'm bringing it up now is because I know, I know well what I'm about to hear in five minutes. And I'm about to hear that my project is somehow a safety issue for Wayside Trailer, when in no way, shape, or form is my project an issue for Wayside Trailer.
Can I just interrupt you one minute? Correct me if I'm wrong, but didn't we have a site visit with the police chief? And you, at that point, with his input, went through the traffic and safety things you're going to put into effect on, on that Pulaski Street? And we, we did see trucks, vans going, you know, 40 miles an hour or more, but what you plan to do will drastically minimize that. And I, I'm going to hold the rest of my comments.
The answer to the question is yes. All the property being mentioned, and this is another state of fact, the property being mentioned is private property. We legally and technically own the street. Now, in 1980, there was, there was a, there was a public access, an easement that was granted to the abutters, a 30-foot right-of-way. But as far as what we can and cannot do for, whether it be speed mitigation equipment, mileage signage and things of that nature, yes, we worked with the police and took those recommendations and integrated them into the plan to make them even more safe than otherwise what they would have been. But the, you know, I'm a private business owner. We're developing real estate. We have a good plan. We've done everything the right way, and it's just, I find it a little bit antagonizing when I'm being challenged, when the plan is being challenged by an entity that now is re-registered with the state of Massachusetts and attempting to do the same thing that I'm doing, which is fine, they have that right. But my suggestion would be go about it the right way, like what we have had to do, and go with, and get with the correct officials, get with the correct inspectors and the building commissioners, develop a plan. Put together, put together a plan, and then submit it like I have had to do over the last three years. Put together a plan and do it the right way. But don't come up here and tell me that I don't have a good plan because I know that I do, and it's in full support of, from a lot of folks, and that's all I got. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Greeley. Yep, you can speak again.
I just, I'm Kathy Wells at 22 West View Circle again. I've lived in my house for 26 years, and you guys know I've been here a million times, and I've seen a lot of unsafe things happen at that industrial park. I've seen a lot of illegal things happening at that industrial park. And I have to tell you, since Eddie and his group has moved in, the place is cleaned up, it's wonderful, but there are still entities there that are doing things that are illegal and that are not following their special permits. And I think that they should be looking at themselves and not at Eddie and his group that have done a wonderful job and have done nothing that is unsafe, and I don't feel that their plan is unsafe in any way. So just wanted to say that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anybody else in the public that would like to speak?
Madam Chair, honorable members. My name is Bill Sheehan. I practice law with McLean, Holloway, Doherty &amp; Sheehan at 8 Essex Center Drive in Peabody. I represent VRRM LLC and Sideways LLC. They're the owners of 13 and a half acres that abut the property that we've been talking about at Mills 58. My comment tonight has to do with the issue that we discussed at the very end of our July meeting, where I indicated that I had proposed a covenant to the applicant so as to make sure that my clients would not be put out of business by residents who would complain about our business located some 25 feet away from...
Correct. What would they complain about?
If I may please be allowed to speak?
Can, but I want to know what would they complain about?
They're going to complain about noise, they're going to complain about a 24-hour-a-day operation, they're going to complain about any number of things, I suspect. And what we are doing there, and it's not just us, it's all of the industrial uses, this is an industrial park. And with all due respect, that's being lost sight of. It's an industrial park, and we have a number of uses that we are making that are allowed as of right under zoning. Residential use is not allowed under zoning here. And so my concern, and they've been twofold, and I have expressed them consistently, but the only one I'm going to talk about tonight because it references what we were talking about at the end of July, is this notion where I proposed a covenant which would guarantee that the, Mr. Greeley, presently the owner, which would be binding on his successes and assigns, would not bring suit against my clients so long as they use the property as they are presently using it and use it for other lawful industrial uses. They deny, they decline to sign the covenant. That's their right to decline to sign the covenant. But what I have done in lieu thereof is I've submitted by way of a letter today, and I don't expect you to take up the issue today, but I want to introduce the issue today, a condition that I'm going to ask this board to put on... a, a condition that I'm going to ask this board to put on any comprehensive permit. And let me just say, and I'm not going to invite a quarrel, but with all due respect, I respectfully disagree with the chair's characterization of this board's duty and this board's power with respect to Chapter 40B. And I'll just leave it at that, we'll just agree to disagree. But one thing that you can do is you can impose conditions, conditions that are consistent with zoning and things of that sort. You cannot impose conditions that have to, that are governed and regulated by the mass housing in Chapter 40B, but other such conditions you can consider. And so I have proposed a very simple condition, it's in my correspondence that I sent over to the board tonight, and I know you won't, don't accept that tonight, you'll accept it at the next meeting, and I understand that. But all the, all the condition says is this: The applicant and its successors and assigns shall not sue or institute any legal action against an owner and its successors and assigns of real estate identified on Exhibit A attached hereto so as to prevent, limit, reduce, inhibit, or interfere with the present use or another lawful industrial use by each such owner of its real estate. And Exhibit A contains a list of the folks who own real estate in the Pulaski Street Industrial Park. So that's what I'm going to ask you tonight to consider for purposes of next month. Sorry to disappoint other speakers if I'm not going to challenge other issues, that's not, I've already made my, my pitch, you've heard it, I'm not going to repeat it. But this is an important piece to my clients, and I would submit an important piece for you to consider, because after all, in the end, one of the things that you can do unquestionably is to consider the compatibility or lack of compatibility between residential use and industrial use, and to protect the existing industrial users and owners. And I thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
You may, because it's important. The covenant not to sue that Attorney Sheehan sent me, how can I put this tactfully, is an extraordinary document that broadly immunizes their use from their bad behavior. And you heard about this notion of safety. They bring up safety as if the residences are going to create a safety issue. No, it's how a lot of the uses run roughshod down 58R Pulaski Street that create the safety issue. What this process is going to result in, and ultimately with the parking plan, is organizing, and Mr. Greeley has already very carefully started the process of organizing, how the traffic moves, how the traffic circulates through the site, where the parking is going to go, where that organization didn't exist before, and it certainly didn't exist prior to Mr. Greeley's ownership of the property. And this notion of a covenant not to sue that would protect them from this broad range of exposure caused by them is extraordinary. And what he's asking you to do, and I really don't want to get into it because I am going to respond to this letter that you did not get by August 3rd, which is required, you will get mine by September 7th, I believe, timely. What he's asking you to do is downright illegal. He's asking you to impose a condition that restricts other people from pursuing any civil claims against them for any activity that they cause on the property, and that's a fact. That's not a legal opinion, and I will put that in writing. I don't want to waste the board's time with that tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Attorney Panos. Can we have a motion to, there's nobody else I don't think that would like to speak? Can we have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Continue, to continue.
That's true, yeah, continue the, so moved.
Alain Viva?
Aye.
Okay, we're going to take one minute, one minute break, one minute. Here, Tan Wright Residences on, let me see, 39 Wallace Street, 4 and 8 Upton Street.
Do I get a correspondence to read?
Uh, just accept it.
Yeah.
Would you, okay, this is continued. We also have, to accept the correspondences, revised architectural plans with the narrative, a revised, 8-3, 8-3, 22, again revised site plan, and 8-11, 22, a Murray letter in opposition.
Move to accept correspondence.
Second.
Alain Viva?
Aye.
Everything accepted? All right, then, Mr. Mina, Attorney Panos.
Good evening. Jason Panos, for the record, practicing law at 246 Andover Street, Peabody, Massachusetts. Tonight's presentation is based on plans, site plan and architectural design plans that were submitted to the board on August 3rd. And just by way of background, in refresher, we started this development proposal with mass housing at 160 units. We subsequently had a neighborhood meeting, which resulted in a 20-unit reduction to 140 units, which is what is currently before you, at least through the application that we submitted. We took a look at the plans, we were asked to reduce building massing, which resulted in a reduction to 132 units, and it's that which we will click, quickly present this evening. Other than the reduction in density, all of the side amenities that we proposed, that you heard of, are still intact. The parking is untouched, which means that the parking ratio is, is even broader than it was, wider than it was. All of the stormwater management appurtenances that we proposed are still intact. All of the sidewalk features, the curb cut features, all of that remains intact. What, what you will hear about is the impact of the reduction from 140 to 132, the addition of some amenity space that's focused more on the industrial side of the building, if you will, and geared away from the sightline, from some abutting neighborhoods that are way off in, on Wallace but toward, toward Tremont Street, where they're experiencing some traffic difficulties related to unrelated uses. And what you'll hear a little bit about tonight are some of the traffic improvements that we're proposing. With that, I would like to close after the architect, Thad Samasco from SV Design, is finished with his presentation, and Tony Cappacetti, who is also from Hayes Engineering, with me, along with Nick Ambiliotis, the applicant principal, and members of the Orgatus Ambiliotis family, who are here tonight and I, I think, watching on TV as well. I would like to just put forward, at the discretion of the board, a schedule for the next hearing, what you really want to hear about. There are so many issues we can talk about, like traffic, stormwater review, as we start to get the peer review process unrolled. And we really didn't think it was appropriate to get the peer review process unrolled until we put forward this density reduction before the board. So over the next couple of weeks, we'll have that in place. Bob Langley and I have been talking and communicating. And so again, after Thad finishes and Tony finishes, I'd like to talk with you about what you want to hear about in September, on September 19th. So with that, and through the chair, Thad, if you can approach and talk about the new plans.
Great, thank you. Whoops.
Thank you. Thad Samasco, SV Design in Beverly. Going to run you through the changes to the plans. It was good, I think we, several you wrote on that site visit, and we were able to walk and see in real life the, the potential for the project. The biggest change we've made is we've essentially lost the entire fifth floor of the building. So it's now a four-story building. There is a small section, it is the fifth floor that is essentially the amenity space, basically a rooftop lounge and, and recreation area and a, and a roof deck. But basically, it's a, it's, the whole story, building has been dropped about 10 feet in height, and I'll walk you through that. This, this rendering indicates the four-story impact, and I'll, I'll walk you through the narrative, as to what the impact of losing that story and, and losing the eight units has on the project. Next, please, Tony. So as Jason mentioned, the project is now 132 units, but not only that, the, there are, the reduction we took was many more of the two-bedroom units were taken down. So the actual square footage of the building was reduced as well, not, not just the unit count. And we also have added for affordability purposes as well as four studio units to the mix, so we'll have a little bit of extra affordability in the project. We still have the 10% three-bedrooms as we're required to have. Now we have 36 twos, that used to be 46, 78 ones, which is pretty close to what we had before, which was the 80, and then the three, the four-studio units. And 25% or 33 units are affordable in the project. Parking count, as Jason mentioned, has stayed the same at 202 spaces, so that basically increases our ratio to one space per bedroom and 1.53 spaces per unit. So it's a nice, rich parking count. We noted that 110 of those spaces are actually enclosed within the garage. Most of the parking, if you remember, was brought inside the site, so it's not, it's not a visual, it's not a visual blight from, from the streets. We've created these street walls around the perimeter of the site. And the development still has the 3,500 square feet of commercial space it had all along. So the ground floor level, the, the site circulation, pedestrian circulation, all stayed the same. It was really simply moving around and reducing some of the unit sizes and taking, we were able to take 20 units off the, off the top floor and, and move a few down below. Next, please. Thank you. You're ahead of me. So 20 apartments were lost, which is, represents 27,000 square feet of space that was on the fifth floor, and popping up top is 3,300 square feet of amenity space with some roof decks. And we put that space central in the building, kind of inside, so that from the street, it has no real impact. You're not walking by that height, it's, it's buried inside of the, of the U of the building. There are 10 units that were added in that connector that we had before. We widened it enough to get the 10 units to fit in there, and then we reworked the rest of the plans to get the 132 units within the, within that building footprint that we had. But total, we lost about 11% of our building and gross floor area. And we kept that idea of, that we got from the master plan of creating, you know, the street wall, the activated wall along the street line, especially along Walnut Street. We kept the idea of the brick base on the building, the durable masonry base, and the idea of those colored panels and pattern, but because we lost the whole floor, that attic story we had up top, there was that kind of lighter story, actually dropped down a floor to the fourth floor, and the shaft, which is that part of the building that connects that base to that attic story, is now two stories instead of three. So the building will have a generally, you know, will appear to be generally lower, beyond the fact that it's actually 10 feet lower. But we did lose 10 feet of building height, and that's counting, but more importantly, it's, it's along this, all of that happened along the street wall. We kept the landscape plan, as Jason mentioned, in place, pretty robust plan with all the flood mitigation and that nice flow of pedestrian and vehicle, vehicles that we had provided. This site plan just shows the slight addition of the footprint at that connector. If you remember, we had kind of two buildings with a, with a connector. We kept the connector mostly glazed still, but we widened it up enough to get, to get the units to go in, otherwise essentially this site plan is unchanged. Little hard to see, but basically the orangey-pink units are the three beds, the purples are the twos, are the ones rather, and the blues are the twos. Not, it's the same plan essentially, we just reworked it so that we could, we could get the units in. Unit sizes generally stay the same. As I mentioned, we took some two bedrooms, we put, maybe made them into a one-bedroom and a studio in order to get, to keep that unit count. So while we lost 20 up top, we lost a net eight units in total, but again, the unit sizes, bedroom count is a little bit reduced. So as you march up the building, it's, the floors just repeat until you get to the fifth So this yellow you see is all that is on the fifth floor. The bottom rectangle is really just open roof deck. We have connecting walkways for means of egress purposes, the elevator goes up there. And there's a lounge, there's a fitness center, there's an outdoor fitness deck, so folks can come up and, and be in the community. And up at that height, we imagine there'll be some, some pretty great views. So this is basically, this, we started with, all the building fits into the context, you can see some of the taller buildings around it, you can see the connection of, of our parks with the park across the street. In general, you can see that the building has, has slipped down a floor. So it's really now a four-story building, appreciated as a four-story building. You can see way up, up back is that fifth floor, which is very light with that glass connector piece still in play. And then a corner of the Upton's Street, we kept the masonry base, we brought it up on the corners, we're doing that kind of idea with the patterning that we've done before, using a color panel and, and creating a pattern, almost like a leather good kind of pattern. And Upton and Wallace, the same. At this point, because of the grade, if you remember on our site walk, it's almost like a three-story building or a three-and-a-half-story building there because the grade is up high and the garage is buried down below where that, where that greenery is shown. And we did, we did keep that color change between the two halves of the building to just add a little more interest to it. So that's, that's the summary of the architecture. Tony, I think you may want to talk about civil a bit?
So, as was already presented, the, the civil remains pretty much unchanged. Obviously, the footprint extended on that corridor, was still... We're still providing almost an acre foot of additional flood storage beyond what's required. So CONCON, or the Wetons Protection Act, anything that's filled in the flood plain has to be compensated for at the same elevation, same volume. But beyond that, underneath that large parking area in between the buildings that's set back, we've essentially hollowed that out with our large infiltration chambers. And we set the pipes to the bottom with big 36-inch pipes. So when the parks that we've designed along the road, they're suppressed low. So when the road does flood, it'll gather that and hold up to an acre foot, which is basically, an acre foot being an acre lot 43,560 square feet to a depth of a foot. So that's additional flood compensation beyond what was there. That'll be below ground and not counted towards our compensation for where we fill for a little bit of the parking deck. Beyond that, the addition of on-street parking remains. The dedicated loading space out front for the existing commercial use at Central Bakery is going to remain. I think the one minor change was to try and cut some of the cost back because we're reducing the units is, we had granite curb at the back of the building on Upton Street where it came around. We don't really see that industrial way. We'd be going to a bituminous curb in that area. But the granite curb will remain around all the street side on Walnut and Wallace Street.
One of the things I want to point out, Jason Ponos, for the record, is, you know, we're stuck with this three-bedroom requirement at 10%. There's no way we can get out of it. So what we did when we added the studios and the one-beds is, I think we mitigated that a little bit by pretty much making the percentage of one-beds, where you're focusing on single-person families, tending toward younger people to kind of populate the area. We're looking at about 60%, almost 60% of the units dedicated to one-beds and studios, so that we could get those people to live downtown populated, walk to the local businesses and the main street, that type of thing. So we've really made a lot of effort to try to mitigate whatever school impacts might be created by those three beds. So I just want to walk away with that. And with that said, what do you want to hear about in September? We've got a few issues we can talk about. We can talk about stormwater management, which is going to be pretty significant. Tony, you going to be ready to go on stormwater management next month? Okay. If traffic, then we'll get VAI here, and we'll do a full traffic presentation. It's up to you guys.
Whatever you can do thoroughly and best, we'll listen to.
We'll do traffic then. And we'll have our traffic consultants. We'll do a full run-through. By then, we fully expect peer review to be in place, although we don't expect peer review reports to come back by that point. But we want to keep it going for you guys. I mean, and to your point earlier, Madam Chair, the work you're doing here is just absolutely extraordinary, and I don't mean this. You know, you act for all the boards in the city of Peabody. You are the site plan review. You are the zoning board. You are the conservation commission to the extent of local, the local ordinance. You do it all, and it's a heavy task. And I hope, at least sometimes, we make that easier for you. Sometimes.
Sometimes. Thank you.
But I mean it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anybody from the audience public to talk about anything? Ask a question, anything at all?
Thank you. Stephanie Peach, 19, Margin Terrace. I did send a letter to the board when this application was initially filed, so you all have that. That was based on the 140 units that was originally filed. Speaking with the neighbors, we did have a neighborhood meeting with the developers. And I've continued to communicate with the neighbors and the residents who live in this area. And frankly, I just, we want to see improvement down here, but 132 units is still a lot for this area of town to swallow. We do a lot. And of the 40Bs that this board has seen and approved, Ward Three has taken a hit of a lot of those. There was one before you earlier this evening, which frankly, the neighbors like. So that's why I didn't get up and speak about that, because the feedback that I've received is positive. On this one, I have received some positivity. They would still like to see the density reduced in some way. What I didn't know about this project until tonight is the fifth-floor addition. I know that that space was supposed to be in the connector, and it looks like the units were moved to there to keep the number of units higher. My concern would be having an outdoor space that is in that back corner facing Paleologus Street, where that is a highly densely populated area, that already deals with listening to the industrial park. So I don't know if we can discuss that further, just having an outdoor space, if there's going to be access to the outdoor roof deck. But overall, just in general, when you're getting your peer review and you're hearing back, the opinion of the residents is the density is high. And if there's anything we can do to reduce that, our schools are overpopulated. Our downtown is jammed with traffic. We would like to see something improve on Walnut Street. I personally would like to see a comprehensive plan come from the city. And I'm pushing to work for that. But I'd like to see that done as a comprehensive plan, not a piecemeal starting with this 40B. Thank you.
Thank you.
Cleo, we did look at the placement of that structure, and it's important to note, it doesn't look down on Paleologus Street. It actually looks down to, where are we at? Yeah, why don't you go back to the picture? Yeah, so it's all the way to the right. It's actually not all the way to the right. Wait, you were there. Yeah, that's okay. Stay there. So it's on top of that red portion of the structure, right in the middle, so it's not all the way over. And it looks down toward the newly proposed Riverwalk and Veterans Memorial Park and industrial uses that are immediately across the street. It doesn't look down over Paleologus. We were very careful about that.
Excuse me, Attorney Ponos. Is it that tennis square?
Yes, so that's outdoor deck space. And then behind it is...
Is that safe?
I'm going to let the architect speak to that.
I can answer that. But maybe show the roof plan, Tony. That may be clearer. So the plan was the three, there, maybe I can, can I get up to there and point? Or do you...
Oh, is it wireless?
Could even be a pointer. So this square here is an outdoor roof deck. And yes, there are safety railings at a certain height. The roof decks are done in residential projects like this all the time. They're perfectly safe. So that's an outdoor space. And it's shown in two spaces because this is a fitness center. And so there'd be an outdoor fitness space here with some kind of privacy wall, so those people who are working out would not necessarily be exposed to the folks who are just enjoying the rest of the deck. This room here is a lounge, which typically has a television, some soft seating, that kind of thing. Place you might have grandma's birthday party kind of thing. This space here is the fitness center. This is a game room, and that's an outdoor kind of game area. Imagine playing cornhole or something. But all those spaces are looking out this way. Their backs are turned to that corner, and it's a large section of roof. More than half the building is a roof before you get there. So there's not really, it's not really impacting the back part of the neighborhood. It's looking forward over Greg's, frankly, and out beyond. I think that helps.
Here's a question for you. So it's somebody's birthday and they want to play corn, whatever it is, up there, and blah, 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 and have a wonderful time. Is there a stipulation that can be put on as far as curfews?
I'll leave that to the counselor.
So then, what's your concern, that they're going to be out at all hours of the night?
Look, you know, my neighbor could have a party till 1:00 a.m. I'm not up till 1:00 a.m., and I don't want to listen to it. This is closer, so, you know, I was just thinking, there's an apartment underneath this? So, yeah, I mean...
That's reasonable.
Even the abutters. You know, I would hate to see somebody having a marvelous time for themselves till 3:00 a.m.
Right, and we wouldn't allow that. But this is one of the reasons why, too, we located that amenity on that side of the building because, I don't know if you recall when we did the site visit, it's all industrial uses on that side of the building, and it's all industrial uses on the backside, that Ferragamo property that extends all the way up to Tremont. That's why we put it there and not on the opposite side, which would have been facing Peabody House and even those abutting neighborhoods that I was talking about off Wallace but up toward Tremont. We wanted to put it there. But reasonable restrictions on time of use and that type of thing, of course, are amenable to.
So that right hand, excuse me, that right-hand rectangle, that's out, you said that's outside recreational, whatever. Is that correct? And I know this is, I don't know, I'm just a little nervous about safety. I mean, can somebody like jump off of that?
Regulations, building code regulations require railings to be at a certain height and that type of thing, and we would have to meet that as a part of our building permit issuance.
Look, I don't want to be an idiot about this, but, so it's, say the railing is six feet. Who's to say somebody can't like be stupid and jimmy up on it and then jump off? I just, I don't know. It's not sitting right with me for safety. You're going to have to convince me a little bit about this aspect.
Maybe at the next hearing, we can have a better picture, depiction of the proposed space.
That's true. I mean, if people are...
Cure stupid.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And we can't have an IQ test as a part of the application process to live here.
And, you know, probably that would never happen. It's just something that struck me right now. And, you know, okay, I mean, great.
Your teacher sense is kicking in, and you want people to be safe. We got it. But if it would help, Thad could do a little picture rendition of the area specifically. We're happy to do that. Yeah.
Yeah, we can do a more detailed drawing so you can see, but these are pretty, these things are pretty commonly done, very commonly done. And we can show you what, kind of what they're like. You see them more in, you know, more toward the Boston area. Although we've done some, there's one at Beverly at the Holmes Building. There's a rooftop deck. There's one, a building we've done called Canvas at 131 Rantoul. Folks really liked that. What's nice about this design is you're on the roof, so you're not bothering any neighbor below. And we have an acoustic engineer look at all of our projects to make sure you don't hear them. But it's not like there's, the party's outside your unit either. And we did put it in that location thinking about the impact on the neighborhood. It's really, the back is, the back is to it. Everyone's, all of that noise and activity is heading, you know, toward the Riverwalk. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else to speak? Just listening? Yes.
Yes. I did the site visit, and I agree with Counselor Peach. You know, 132 is a large number. But I'll tell you, I was horrified by Upton Street. I couldn't believe what the condition of that street is right now, and we need to have something done over there. If it's 132 units, if that's the cost to clean it up over there, you know, you're getting more support from me here. I like the roof deck. I like that you've taken that top floor off. 132 is still a lot. You're winning me over more and more. Keep working at it and...
Thank you. Yeah, that's our whole intent. We have to clean up the entire periphery of the site or else it doesn't work. Because, keep in mind, there isn't... Well, right. But beyond the roof deck issue, I mean, the manner of access to the property is not through Walnut Street or even Wallace Street. It's through Upton Street. It's from the back of the building.